Pull your mic, pull your mic, nothing happened. Now try to get it.
Two hour, February the 5th, 2018 Cumberland County Commissioners Meeting. Donald Huffman, good to see you today, representing the library. Jesse Bellflower's back there. Of course, Dr. Keen will be, recognize you in a minute. And hey, what can we say about the guys and everyone over here representing our veterans? God bless you, and they probably need an applause before we even get started. Thank you so much. As a matter of fact, God bless you and thank you for everything you continue to do for our country. I hope no one's crying about the results of the game last night. And I'm sure some of us probably still have a late night hangover from being up so late. I made it through the first quarter, which is remarkable. And, but thank you sincerely for everyone being here this morning. At this time, I'd like to ask Commissioner Faircloth to go on vacation, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Let's stand and honor God and country this morning. Our dear heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to gather here together this morning to do the business of our county. Lord, we ask your blessings on our county and its people, on our state and on our nation. We thank you, Lord, for those men in uniform who are protecting us as we speak. We ask that you keep them safe from harm. We ask your special blessing upon us as we deliberate, deliberate the business of our county. We ask that our decisions be pleasing in your sight. These things we ask in your name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we have some special recognitions. I ask Commissioner Keith if he will go down, and we will be recognizing Fayetteville Technical Community College for being ranked number one nationally, and then the recognition of the Cumberland County Veteran Services for achieving number one position in the state. Thank you, Commissioner Keith.
My pleasure. Ready to go? Thank you, Chairman. I really am honored to be able to be up here for not one, but two different presentations. And honor is something I'm going to be talking about a little bit as we, as we lead up to that. And Commissioner Evans, also a veteran, but in our community, being a veteran is more than just a label. I think if I go out here and ask everybody here by show of hands, somebody who is veteran, has a family member is a veteran, someone who has touched their lives, a veteran, I ask for a raise of hands. Can we see that? I think we'll find out most people in our community. And that touches us every day. It touches us in our schools. I have two young children that are in school, and, and a lot of their friends are friends of, friends of active duty servicemen and women, and it affects them. It affects them in every way. So, as, not, again, in my family, I, I'm fortunate enough to be the son of a veteran, a veteran myself, and the father-in-law of an active duty service member. In, in local government, I mentioned Commissioner Evans, we have a number of people on our city council, a couple of people in our state legislature, all retirees and veterans, and we understand the issues. I do want to share something, and I've never really had the opportunity to do this, but, Chairman Lancaster, you know, when people would come up, and I'm sure all of us have had this situation that are veterans, is people come up and say, you know, thank you for your service. And there's that initial thought of, you know, I felt a little uneasy, undeserving, so many people have done so much. And for someone to thank me for my service to a country that I love is akin to thank you for being a good father, a, a good husband. You know, it's what we do with the love that we have. And so now, when I've, I've settled in with myself a little bit to say, when someone says, "Thank you for your service," it's simply, I reply, "It was my honor to serve." And it is. And I think all of us will feel that way, because it is an honor to serve something you love. Each of us served this county. It's something we love. We serve our country, we serve our family, we serve our friends, a lot of times. So, I appreciate you allowing me to talk about that. But today, to segue into honor, today I get to honor some really outstanding things that have happened in our community. First, I'm going to start with our own Fayetteville Technical Community College. Fayetteville Technical Community College, first of all, has had the reputation of going where others won't go, of doing what others won't do, and, and working with our military community when others won't. And a lot of this is attributed to the leadership that's out there, and we're going to talk a little bit about that, because today, special recognition is that Fayetteville Technical Community College, our own, was ranked number one nationally in the top ten Gold Category College Awards for Large Community College, number one in the country. That's an impressive, that's an impressive thing. It's not surprising to us. We know about Fayetteville Technical Community College. I sat with Dr. Keen on a number of issues, and he's talked very excitedly about all the things that they're doing to help out veterans, and to help out people that are coming out of high school, and people that are learning trades, and people that have just gotten out, and some of them even active duty soldiers. They are really working hard to what it is. We know that this is a military-friendly place, and FTCC exemplifies that. Because when you recognize the service of others, you do good for yourself and your community. So, for me, speaking on behalf of the county commissioners, we are very proud of what FTCC has for this richly deserved honor. And at this time, I would like to call up the President of FTCC and veteran, Dr. Larry King. Come on up.
Thank you, Commissioner Keith. It's always a pleasure to be with all of you and to share the time with you. We're very proud of what we do with our veterans, we're very proud of what we do with the people of Cumberland County and this region. We are the third largest community college in the state. We just returned last week from Orlando, Florida, where we were a finalist. I want to present this to you with your kind remarks. We won the number one award for the large category in, in community colleges with Victory Media and a variety of others, and so we're very proud of that. And we're absolutely dedicated to the success that we enjoy with our veterans and their families. In addition to that, we were recognized last week as a finalist. There are 1,100 community colleges throughout the United States. About 300 of them are invited. You can't just apply, they're invited to present what they're doing. And so we were a top ten finalist in the United States last week for the Bellwether Award in recognition of exactly what you just said, and that's helping our transitioning military members as they're going into veteran status, get jobs with livable wages, family livable wages, and so forth and so on. So I just wanted to share that with you, and thank this Board of Commissioners for all the things that you do. When I look at my faculty and staff administrators out at the college, there are a significant number, if not most of them, that are in fact veterans, because we, we play and hold true to the, to the statements that you made. And there's nothing more gratifying to us than to see a young man or young woman as they're making that transition, and they've done some of the most complicated things in the world, defending our freedoms. And as they make that transition, they should have every right to expect better things in the future as opposed to expecting lesser things. And that's our mission, that's our job, that's what we try to do every single day. And so this Bellwether Award, in addition to the number one ranking, is another demonstration of what we do and what we're dedicated to do to help our veterans and our military personnel succeed. And it's an honor to be here with you today, and thank you for the recognition.
Let's keep back up this way a little bit, so I can get a picture. I know this kid, I know this kid in his land.
No, you don't, you don't know me.
Congratulations.
Look at that.
Oh, my.
John, you got to just run here right now. Anybody else like to come up and have a picture taken?
I'm the picture person. I'm right over there.
The veterans, yeah, all the veterans. Probably need for the veterans.
Commissioner Evans, a part of the veteran group here, Commissioner, you'd like to put pictures.
All three of you, she said.
All, all three, all three, please.
Right here.
That's what I want.
That's all right. I'm all good.
Glenn may not stand up.
You see how he treats them?
Yes.
He moving. He, oh, he moving back and forth.
The bush is mobile.
In here. Bring it, John, that's best we can look all day.
Thank you.
And going with that same theme that we had before, we talked about the, as veterans transition out and the service they get. Well, another part of transitioning out is veteran services. About, about two, two years ago, maybe three years ago, we made a hard line commitment to allow our veterans to have their own place, to be able to receive the services. We hired a director who had a lot of experience, who had a commitment to veteran services and the role that veterans play, and more importantly, the needs that veterans have. And at this time, I'd like to bring up Eric, Eric Reddick. Eric, come on in here. How you doing?
Congratulations, big day.
Yeah. Cumberland County Veteran Services. Achieving the prestigious position does not come as any surprise, because we have been notified that Cumberland County Veteran Services has achieved the highest ranking in the state, the state of North Carolina, for the geographical distribution of Veterans' Affairs expenditures for the fiscal year 2016. Now, I just read that, but I want that to sink into you a little bit. We are not the largest population, but we care for our veterans at a level that even the largest counties don't come close to. If you added up some of the largest counties together, they still don't come in to what the commitment that we have, not only in service, but in funding to our veterans. And a lot of it is attributed to this man right here and his staff. And just like being in the Army, as every one of you former soldiers can tell us, nobody does it alone, right? That's right? And Eric will be the first one to tell you that. He's got a staff that does that. I want to read a little comment that came from Mr. Todd Stokely, the regional, Shockley, I'm sorry, the Regional Manager of the North Carolina Department of Military and Veterans Affairs. The news that Cumberland County Veteran Services achieved this prestigious position does not come to any surprise. Having known the office and the amount of hard work that you and your staff provide the veterans in Cumberland County every day, year in and year out, deserves recognition. As always, your office has thrived to be the best, and once again, you have proven it. Those are big words from somebody who has to do, who sees, oversees a lot of veterans' area. I, I do want to give you a few numbers here, and I don't want to bore anybody, because sometimes with numbers, things go crazy. But Cumberland County had expenditures for veteran services of $823 million. By, by comparison, the other military community, Onslow County, Camp Lejeune, had $41 million. Mecklenburg County, the largest county in our state, only had $395 million. We had double that in our veteran services. Wake County, again, less than 400, we doubled that. If you combine Wake County and Mecklenburg County, we still committed to veterans at a higher level. So with that being said, Mr. Reddick, congratulations for that honor. We appreciate it, and I'd like for you to take the mic here and say some things that you'd like to about it. And thank you very much for your service to our community and the veterans. Yeah, just go around, because the camera will get you on the other side. We let everybody see.
It's a privilege, first of all, to be here among the county commissioners, my boss, the county manager, and the department heads. But more so, I would like to thank my staff, because without them, this would never happen. I came on board, I didn't know exactly what to look for, but with Johnny's help and Manisha's help, they guided us along. I brought in some very special people that is doing an outstanding job from day one. And I just want to say to everyone, thank you so much, it's a great privilege.
Before I sit down, there are two people that I would like to recognize and come up forward. Mr. Jerry Fontaine and Mr. John, former Sergeant Major John Coan. And I think both of you have something that you would like to talk about a little bit, about what's happening with our veterans community. So, Mr. Fontaine, if you'd like to start off first.
Well, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
And all the commissioners. This is on behalf of the US Army Wounded Warrior Program, and we have certificates for each of the staff members, and the certificate reads, "In recognition for the dedication and service in support of the Army Wounded Warrior Program and the veteran community and the family of Fayetteville, North Carolina, your continued outreach of effort to provide relief, encouragement, and support in the critical life transition made a lasting impact on our service to the United States Wounded Warrior Program and the United States Army." And it actually goes to each of the members that we have, if everyone could come up. We had it in order.
It wasn't. That's my plan.
So I won't, I can't thank you all for everything that you all do. Hope this wasn't a surprise. But would you really appreciate it.
Charles on the end. And Jimmy.
I blocked, blocked.
Charles and Jimmy, yeah.
Let's get my law commissioner standing.
Perfect.
Perfect. Got you.
That's pretty, ain't it?
Eric, come on, bring your staff around and shake each other, Commissioner, Eric and staff.
Congratulations.
At this time, I'd like to introduce Sergeant Major Retired John Coan, who has another special
announcement.
First of all, I'd like to say greetings to the leadership of Cumberland County. It is a true honor to stand before you. Many of you, as already stated, are military members yourselves or retired. These seven people that stand before you right now, seven that are responsible for over 6,000 individuals of this county, not including the five or six surrounding counties, that is a tremendous undertaking for these seven individuals. But they did it and came out the best in North Carolina. So we, the Sergeant Majors of Cumberland County, greet you and say thank you for that. At this time, I will ask one of our Sergeant Majors to come up, and he's going to read the citation to you. And at the same time, he's presenting you with that, so that we don't take up all the precious time for the commissioners. They will be giving you two items. One will be a coin from the Sergeant Majors Association, two will be a citation given to you. And to Mr. Eric Reddick, you'll receive the trophy for the office and a hat for yourself.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Sergeant Major Retired Al Brunson, paratrooper for 27 years, and actually a county worker for almost 20 years. So, on behalf of the Sergeant Major Association, to all, to whom shall see greetings. This is to certify that the President of the Sergeant Major Association has awarded the Certificate of Excellence to the Veteran Service Office. For outstanding service while serving as a subject matter expert for the Cumberland County Veteran Service Office, the professionalism, devotion to duty, contribute significantly to the office's high level of service to the veterans' population within Cumberland County and surrounding areas that request assistance with veteran issues. Their exemplary performance of service reflects great credit upon each staff member and is in keeping with the proudest tradition of the Cumberland County Veteran Service Office. Again, on behalf of the Sergeant Major Association, we thank you for your service to the county of Cumberland.
While they're continuing to pass out the awards to the individuals, you know, it's, you can't do anything unless you have a strong leadership in individuals who care about you, just like when many of us were called to do duties overseas in the sandbox, wherever. We trained them, made sure they had everything that they need, and then we sent them off to do the job that they were supposed to do. Well, we have two individuals sitting over here, one I'll never forget her name, Ms. Cannon. I'm an artilleryman. So, Mr. Holder, we, the Sergeant Majors of this great city and county and nation, want to give you a token also. And one area on this token that everybody has, and it says, "Strength in unity." And that's why we're here today, for unity and to work as one. Thank you for your support to the leaders. That's all that we have at this point, and I'll move out of the way.
Well, I think that's all. Eric, to your staff, I think everybody understands that this isn't our staff, this is our community staff, and you serve our community in a way that we are very much appreciative for everything that each and every one of you do. I hope that you take that with you with every veteran that comes through there, and continue to do the, the service that you do. You know, doing this again next year is going to be important. When you set the standard, you got to meet the standard. You got the task, it is. The Sergeant Majors, folks, we got almost probably 150 years of service, I'm sure, over here, and we appreciate everything you do. Al, it's good to see you again. Yeah, it's been a long time. Hey Gilbert, veteran, there you go. Dr. King, Jesse, I see Charlie back there, we got, we got a few veterans in here. Our community thrives on the veterans, and if I missed you, I apologize. But that being said, it's a great day to recognize veterans in Cumberland County, and thank you for all that you do. Commissioner Evans, thank you for all you did too.
Again, I want to express my gratitude to each of you for everything that you have done for this country and also this fantastic team here. I've had the opportunity to work with you on a number of occasions, and you always came through with flying colors. You represent Cumberland County well. And also, I have in my presence my former commander, Mr. Bays, Gilbert Bays. So, thank you again for all the services that you run.
Well, you got to include everybody. The Sergeant Majors too. We want you to include the Sergeant Majors.
Can we get the Sergeant Major?
We trained them, made sure they had everything that they need, and then we sent them off to do the job that they were supposed to do. Well, we have two individuals sitting over here. One, I'll never forget her name, Ms. Cannon. I'm an artilleryman. So, Mr. Holder, we, the Sergeant Majors of this great city and county and nation, want to give you a token also. And one area on this token that everybody has, and it says, "Strength in Unity." And that's why we're here today, for unity and to work as one. Thank you for your support to the leaders. That's all that we have at this point, and I'll move out of the way.
Well, I think that's all. Eric, to your staff, I think everybody understands that this isn't our staff. This is our community staff. And you serve our community in a way that we are very much appreciative for everything that each and every one of you do. I hope that you take that with you with every veteran that comes through there and continue to do the service that you do. You know, doing this again next year is going to be important. When you set the standard, you gotta meet the standard. You got the task at hand. The Sergeant Majors, folks, we got almost probably 150 years of service, I'm sure, over here. And we appreciate everything you do. Al, it's good to see you again. Yeah, it's been a long time. Hey Gilbert, veteran, there you go. Doctor King, Jesse, I see, certainly back there, we got a few veterans in here. Our community thrives on the veterans, and if I missed you, I apologize. But, that being said, it's a great day to recognize veterans in Cumberland County, and thank you for all that you do. Commissioner Evans, thank you for all you did too.
Thank you.
Again, I want to express my gratitude to each of you for everything that you have done for this country and also this fantastic team here. I've had the opportunity to work with you on a number of occasions, and you always came through with flying colors. You represent Cumberland County well. And also, I have in my presence my former commander, Mr. Baze, Gilbert Baze. So, thank you again for all the services that you run.
Well, you've got to include everybody. The Sergeant Majors too. We want you to include the Sergeant Majors.
Can we get the Sergeant Major? Eric, thanks. Come on, all these Sergeant Majors, we gotta be able to get somebody some dress right dress. Let's go.
They're waiting on the Marines.
Somebody's gonna give the final order.
Okay.
Platoon, here's Miss.
Larry, I'm gonna be pulling item. Two and eight.
Two.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Three and. Three what?
Three and eight. I saw the presentation. No, no. Three and.
We ready, Mr. Chairman?
Ready.
Yes, sir.
Thanks again to everyone, and I guess we could dismiss our platoon over there. Whenever you guys and everyone feels like leaving, or certainly you're welcome to be here and remain with us. At this time, call on our county manager, Mrs. Cannon, for approval of the agenda.
There are no changes, sir.
No changes to agenda.
Move to approve the agenda.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second, all those in favor?
Unanimous.
Presentations, County Manager.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our first presentation is from the North Carolina Department of Transportation on a proposed landscape design for specified interchanges on the outer loop of I-295. And Mr. Jackson's going to introduce our speakers this morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and County Commissioners.
Good morning.
Joining us this morning, we have Jeff Lackey with the North Carolina Department of Transportation, and Mike Tarrant, who's with Stewart and Associates. And they're gonna make a presentation on the proposed changes for design, landscape design on Interstate 295.
Mr. Chairman, instead of coming, I'd just say, I serve on the Gateway Committee, and I think these, everybody with that has done an excellent job. They present to us at the Gateway Committee with the city. So, I thought it was important with 295 coming around that we get some update as to all of those conversations. So I want to thank them for taking their time out of their day to come. We actually have the Department of Transportation back in the back of the room, sitting there also. So thank everyone.
And as you guys are coming up, we'd like to recognize Representative Billy Richardson. So Billy, thanks for being with us this morning. Thank you.
Good morning, I'm Mike Tarrant with Stewart. Appreciate the introduction, Mr. Jackson. I'm the Associate Manager of Landscape Architecture and have been working with Jeff Lackey and NCDOT for several years on numerous projects, roadside environmental aesthetic enhancements in the eastern portion of the state. As you're aware, this includes the I-295 corridor here around Fayetteville. So wanted to just briefly bring you up to speed on the program that we're using to implement these improvements, touch on that, and then share with you, as Mr. Adams pointed out, the concepts that we prepared for the two interchanges. And then ultimately, we would like your input as far as which direction you'd like to pursue so that we can finalize the design plans and move forward implementing these improvements. So, the aesthetic roadside management program is, has several components to it. Vegetation management, litter management, aesthetic engineering, placemaking, and then the three-tiered classification that we're studying with this corridor as far as landscaping is concerned. So with the landscaping components of this program, there are three tiers of classification that we tend to implement using depending on the type of project that we're working with, available funding and so forth. The first being a standard landscape, which really focuses on naturalization, reforestation. The intent is to be ultimately no maintenance upon establishment of the plant material. The next classification is enhanced, and we use that to start introducing ornamental plant material, to sort of bring in seasonal color, start to identify placemaking components and so forth. And then the landmark classification is where we really drive home. It's implemented for areas where we really want to create gateways for certain areas. We start to introduce components that aren't necessarily plant material. Could be public art, signage, aesthetic walls and so forth. So as we've worked with the Fayetteville Gateways Committee over the last several months, we took an initial pass at how we would implement these particular tiers along the I-295 corridor. You can see the pink circles there are the major interchanges where I-95 intersects with I-295. Those we initially thought would be landmark landscapes. The green circles identify other major interchanges along the corridor that we would implement an enhanced landscape. And then the blue circles are minor interchanges, bridge abutments and so forth, that we would implement a standard landscape. And as we worked with the Fayetteville Gateways Committee in sort of assessing the available funding for this project, we determined that it probably wasn't going to be beneficial to implement all of these areas as initially envisioned. So we really honed in on the Murchison and Ramsey interchanges to really, you know, excuse me, provide a dramatic impact at those two interchanges. So focusing on Murchison Road, just kind of zooming out at a high level, identifying some of the key elements that really drove the decision to implement the landscapes at this particular interchange with Fayetteville State University, Downtown Festival Park, and the Veterans Park. So this is a, an example, a conceptual plan of the landmark treatment for this particular interchange. It's a lot, it's a very, very vast area. It's about 100 acres in its entirety, I believe. So the approach with this particular landscape would be very natural, plant material that's native to this area, savanna, sweeping grasses, ornamental trees, and canopy trees as well. And then we took an initial pass, these are all based on square footage pass estimates for what it might cost to implement this particular design at this interchange, roughly right around 1.1 million dollars, 1.2 million dollars, excuse me, for all the plant material and then the maintenance for the establishment period. So, as an example of an enhanced treatment, you can see where we start to minimize the amount of vegetation, really focusing on trees. That's where we get a bigger, bigger impact for the money that's available, starting to create pockets of reforestation, and then some ornamental trees at key areas along the interchange. And the initial estimate for this is right around a half a million dollars. So I guess, I apologize, if I back up a little bit, for the standard, standard tier classification, that would all be implemented with the funding that's available for this particular project. And as I mentioned, little to no maintenance. An enhanced element would, in many cases, require additional funding from other sources outside of NCDOT, and it also would require a municipal agreement to maintain that interchange in perpetuity, as would landmark as well. And then here's an example for the Murchison interchange of what a standard landscape might end up being. You know, few, few canopy trees, but mainly focusing on mowing patterns, making it very easy to maintain the interchange, and really just creating reforested areas for the land that was denuded during the construction of the interchange. And this would roughly be about $270,000 of initial estimate. So then in comparison, side by side, you can see the difference between the three approaches, what it might look like and the costs associated with each of those. And then focusing on Ramsey, again, zooming out, looking at some of the key components that are directly off of that interchange with Methodist University, Cape Fear Botanical Gardens, and the Hay Street District. This interchange isn't quite as large as the Murchison. The planting area is very minimized, just due to the geometries of the roadways and the ramps. We're taking a banding approach here with the land that's available, starting to introduce some areas for signage, retaining walls. You can see in the upper right-hand corner there of introducing some stone and things that might be a little more impactful than just landscaping. The other unique opportunity with this particular interchange are the actual bridge abutments. We're thinking, if you look in the lower right-hand corner there, might be an opportunity for a mural or something that could dress that up and really create a dramatic impact at this particular interchange. And here's a three-dimensional, 3D view of what that might look like, introducing some native pollinator plant material in the medians, and then a mural or artwork that could be commissioned to local university or other entity. This particular interchange with this landmark design, we're looking at roughly $650,000 to implement that. And this, these numbers don't include any of the sculptural or mural or anything like that. With the money that's available, we're only allowed to really implement plant material so we can provide the infrastructure for lighting or signage or sculpture and so forth. But then, again, that would have to be commissioned as another project. And then, an example of an enhanced landscape treatment for this, again, you see reduction in the amount of plant material, really just focusing on wide, wide bands of plant material to accommodate the speed of the traffic and so forth, maintaining the views and sight distances. Still dressing up the corners of the interchange where traffic is slowing down to really create that sort of gateway presence at this location. And this estimate is roughly around $430,000 to implement the plant material here. And then you can see here what a standard treatment might look like. Again, just basically a nice, clean, simple evergreen hedge row along the bridge abutments, still maintaining the pollinators for some seasonal interest in the medians there, and then just creating reforested pockets at the corners of the interchange. And then this is rough, coming in roughly $360,000. And again, side by side, Kivon Parison, so you can see the difference in these three approaches. And then just to give you a better sense of our envision for the planting at both of these interchanges, something very clean and native, sort of the sweeping savanna, you know, very eco-friendly to the particular region. And then these are just some different opportunities for funding. As I mentioned before, if we do anything other than the standard landscape, it'll require additional funding from other sources as well as the maintenance commitment. So, in many cases, we've used private funding and public-private partnerships to accommodate these and implement the landscaping. And then just for simplicity, to have all six approaches here on one slide for you, as I mentioned, 1.3 million dollars is available. So depending on which approach we take, we would need sort of, we would need input from you all as far as your comfort level and how you'd like to proceed with these particular landscape enhancements. With that, I'd like to thank you for your time and be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman, I will tell you, and I want to thank them, they did do yeoman's work, I think in terms of being able to present this. I will tell you, coming from the Gateway Committee, there is a, and this is going to be a tremendous gateway into this community coming down I-295. It's going to be the first view for a lot of people coming into this community. The standard that we saw doesn't cost us any money, but it's just, I think the pictures really don't do a little bit of justice. They've got some other ones that really show the difference between the three, the standard, the enhanced and the landmark. From looking at, being at the Gateway Committee and talking to the city, I think they are a little past the standard, looking at maybe the enhanced and the landmark. But again, it costs money to be able to do that. And part of it is, some of it sits out there, especially on the Murchison Road corridor, some of that sits in the county as to whether what our comfort level was going to be to be able to have some input and some financial input into those areas. So I thought it was important that we at least get the initial and come back and talk about it in committee so that we can get some movement on these gateways. If anybody has any questions or anything. I think DOT is here and they're here to answer any questions today.
This might be premature, but is this also going to be kind of consistent with, as we get and finish the whole loop? Is looking at all the different little accessways and coming in from different areas of the county?
I believe that's correct, that there'll be additional funding available.
So if we want to set like a pattern now of, you know, the purple flowers or something, you know, whatever it is, beet or something, then we need to be looking more to than just one gateway, one entrance, one off-ramp?
Absolutely.
Come to the mic.
This whole list, this is just the.
The first phase of it. But one thing I want to throw out there is that we really want to have buy-in from the county. The department has money in place, in large part because of the landscape policy that we have. And this is not only just for Cumberland County, but for the entire state. And what we want to have is make sure that whatever we put out there is going to be able to be maintained. And that's one, I think, one of the key components of this, not only just in the short term, but in the long term. As Board Member Adams said, it's a great opportunity to create this gateway that a lot of times people may, this may be the only impression that they're able to get about this particular region.
At least they're first, it may not be their only one, they get past it, but at least it's their first.
Exactly, so, so that, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, and the, is it the same, and I get this all wrong because I'm not a part of the agency or department or bureau or whatever, but is it your same group or organization? Or do you talk also with like the folks that are doing like the sound barriers for residential areas that go up? Or is this totally different, left arm, right arm?
No, we work with, well, actually Greg Barnes.
Yeah, he's back there.
Greg Burns is the Division Engineer, and Keith Beverly is our roadside environmental engineer. We work together, and we try to do this holistically. That's the, that's the key point. I think Mike had talked about that earlier with the RMP. Within, internally within the department, we try to look at everything holistically and how we can bring all these different parts together so that when you see it at the Murchison Road or Murchison Interchange or the Ramsey Interchange, you'll also see different components of that throughout the rest of the corridor. So, we want to be consistent.
I appreciate the vision on that because that's why it's not going to be done overnight. And I didn't want to start with this one, and then four years down the road, we do option D, and then four more years down the road or something as we're finishing everything up, we're up to a different F. Or, you know, the plan wasn't looked at before the roads are all built. We're not just coming up as one's done, we then start looking at it.
Now, hopefully this will provide a template so that later on down the road, because we know construction's going to go on for the next however many years, you'll have that temple in place. But the big key component of this, and I don't want to overstress it, but we need to have buy-in from the county, the city, or, you know, private corporations to be able to maintain it. There's money out there to do it, we can install it, but we gotta have that buy-in to help maintain it. That's the big part of this.
I think Representative Richard just said, "Don't worry, we'll always have plenty of money for Cumberland County." Okay, I'm sorry, maybe I didn't have my glasses on.
Oh, no doubt about that. Keith and Greg and their shop, they do a fantastic job of coming, I mean, just coming in today. I'm in Raleigh, so I work with a group called Aesthetic Engineering. We pretty much manage aesthetics for the entire state. But they do a phenomenal job of creating this gateway as people travel down the 95 corridor.
So then you're basically our prototype of what we need to ride down here and kind of get a knee-jerk reaction out of you when you come off and you go like, is it all commercial or is it all? or is it all military? Is it all industrial? You know, you want to, you're basically our guinea pig that we need to see, is this pleasing to you? What is your first impression?
Absolutely. We take aesthetics seriously, in large part because in North Carolina, the second biggest moneymaker is tourism. And people travel to this state because they love the beauty of it. So we take it seriously and we want to, you know, give communities opportunities to buy into that partnership with us.
Well, thank you for your vision.
Do you have any other folks with you representing?
Yes. My division engineer from down here is Greg Barnes. Keith Beverly is the...
He's in the state.
Yeah. So yeah, we work together. I like to think that I am a client with them, but you know, Greg is kind of over this whole division, which includes, how many counties, Greg? Five counties. And that's another, and I don't want to go there again, but our guys have limited men to maintain a lot of stuff. They're stretched over five counties. And so that's why a lot of times we really want to get that buy-in from the individuals in the areas that we're working, so.
And I think, Mr. Chairman, I think that was the difference between that standard enhanced and landmark. As you go up, it's more maintenance on it.
Absolutely, absolutely. But with a landmark, you really have an opportunity to create a vision for the community. And as a ex-resident here and ex-veteran of Fayetteville and this area, I know the jewels that are here that a lot of times people traveling to the state aren't even aware of. So it's a great opportunity to kind of showcase that.
Well, anything else to anyone? I'm sorry.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for coming. There's a couple of things, don't go anywhere. There's a couple of things I'd like to say about this. One is, your gateways are your front door. And your front door is a perception of your community. And when you do that, and for many years, all of us have heard, and when we've traveled outside, the perception of our community sometimes does not do our community justice. So it is important that when people come through, that the first initial impression that they have of our community is one of positive and changing, the things that we, the good things we do. But I want to now get down to the detail side. If we consider this a bit of a matching fund, because you say you have the standard, that you can put, the standard funding would be DOT's responsibility. Anything above that would be buy-in from the community, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So we can't sit around and let you do the standard and then come back to you three years later and say, "Hey, we want to go up." So what kind of timeline are we working on with the ones that are already in place? Obviously, the ones that haven't been finished yet, we have a little bit of time on, but the Ramsey Street corridor, the Merkison Road corridor that encompasses the Shaw Heights area and some of that area. So tell me what kind of timeline we're on.
Okay. I don't have all the details of that and, you know, Greg may be able to speak to that. But typically, what happens is once a project is finished, the construction's done, the feds usually allow that money up to like two to three years post-construction, but there is a limitation in when those monies have to be spent. So, but yeah.
And if I can follow up, Greg, because I'm going to follow up with another question you probably could answer too. As Commissioner Adams said, once you up the level, you up the cost of maintenance. So when we commit to say the half a million dollars on the standard to, you know, a million and a half on that, the ongoing cost, we have a projection of what that would be also, and would that be a county or a city's responsibility in total?
Yes. As far as the schedule, you know, the project, the construction's complete, we want to move on with improving aesthetics because we get a lot of input from the public, from the city, from different folks, you know. We want to see I-295 look better. So, you know, we've developed this plan, so it's at the point now, we need to make a decision on the landmark enhanced or standard. And we have those cost figures that we can, well, they're on this slideshow, each one of what it would cost, what the additional cost would be. Portions of these are, I think, are in the city, portions are in the county. So what's in the city, anything above our initial funding would be that of the city or the county. And then the maintenance of that would be city or county. We would enter into an agreement. So it would be ongoing maintenance of those landscape enhancements by the city or the county.
And that depends on whether we want irrigation, irrigation or electrical or whatever that may have to be out there.
Yeah, irrigation is something that we cannot put funding toward, but the county or the municipality can, and we can combine that with the project.
Thank you, Greg. Thanks for all the work you guys do.
Commissioner Cans?
Hallelujah, thank you. I finally get to comment. But when I first saw this and looked at it, because this is not the first time it's been, the information has been presented to us, I went straight to the bottom line, how much it would cost. And I looked at it and it's a budgetary item. We just had a goal-setting session within the last 10 days. I know we want the moon, we need the moon. But right now, I am very concerned with our present obligations, our budget, and how we can do this. I want to put everybody on notice that any funds left over in this district, we need here.
She's talking to you all.
We ain't turned around yet. Because we don't have it in our budget right now, and it has to be something that has to be targeted. This has been a concern of ours for several years. I cannot remember the month that we received this report for the first time. It was several months ago that we received it for the first time. And I went through line by line, like I do my personal budget at home. Now, I may want to drive a Cadillac SUV, but I'm driving a Hoopde, okay? It still gets me there. So I have to treat county money like that also. Not that I'm disagreeing, it is important. Our gateways are extremely important, but I just want to throw that in there. Our county management team has kept us engaged in it, but we have several items on this agenda that are going to cost more money. So you said public-private partnership, and you are going to provide us with some models as to how to get this private money?
Well, actually, I can give you some examples where that's been done throughout the state. For example, in the Meban Burlington area, they have what they call the New Leaf Society. And Glenn Haven, the owner of that corporation, he basically provides their private monies to DOT to help maintain that corridor through there.
Okay.
I guess the big thing is this, is that upfront, the department has money based on the landscape policy to do the installation of that. Our concern is, as a steward of the land and as a landscape architect, we want to do no harm. We want to make sure that what we put out there is going to be able to be maintained.
Yes.
And thus, that's the reason why we have this tiered system where we have standard enhanced and landmark design. So if we can get buy-in, I can give you an example where a municipality is basically taking care of one of our landmark designs, City of Salisbury. They saw an opportunity for the industry gateway to provide this front door for people that were traveling along I-85. So what they did is they put in their budget $30,000 a year to maintain that interchange. Another example is the City of Wilmington. What they did is they expanded their landscape force to maintain a major landmark design where we've got public art, a gateway, a park and everything that honors the 1898 riot and stuff that took place there. But what they did is they expanded their workforce to maintain it. And that was something that we kind of clarified and got cleared upfront before we went forward with this landmark design. And pretty much what we're showing right now is basically what we've done to these different municipalities, different counties, to let them know upfront that, yeah, if we go with this landmark design, there's going to be additional costs on your end to maintain it. And if this is not what you want, then we'll go with a standard design where typically we're going to do some trees, some turf, and we're going to do our normal five to six mowing cycles per year. And you're not going to, it's not going to be as attractive and maybe as inviting. It's going to look more natural and more sustainable as Mike had discussed earlier.
I understand. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anybody?
No.
Thank you. Thanks, Senator. Mr. Cannon, we have another presentation?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a presentation by Callie Gardner, who's our Director of Pretrial Services. And we thought we would begin this year by bringing in, at the morning meeting, a department to kind of showcase what they're doing and the services that they're providing for our citizens as a way of telling our story. So with that, Ms. Gardner.
Welcome, Ms. Gardner.
Good morning, Commissioners. Callie, management and guests. My name is Callie Gardner, Amy Sid, from the Department of Pretrial Services, Survivor Treatment Courtment and Misdominatory Program. And I'm here to give you a brief update on all three programs. The Cumberland County Pretrial Services serves the fourth largest metropolitan area in North Carolina with the largest military complex. Our mission is to promote public safety by promoting public safety by providing supervision of persons released on the program. The purpose is to reduce incarceration costs by reducing the jail population. Pretrial Services Unit has two programs. Pretrial Release Program and electronic monitoring known as the house arrest program. Pretrial Release Program designed for defendants who have a lesser criminal history require a moderate supervision, which they do not have ankle bracelet, daily call-ins and weekly office visits. They are able to be gainfully employed or attend school. Some may require a curfew if they're 17 and under. The electronic monitoring program is designed for defendants who have a more extensive criminal history and require a more intensive supervision. They are confined to their residence and they are on GPS where they are monitored by a tracking device. Collaboration. Our agency works in conjunction with the judges who assign individuals to the program, the attorneys and the detention center to reduce the jail population by releasing defendants who qualify for our program. Our summary, in the last six months of 2017, there was a daily average of 147 participants in the pretrial release program and an average of 65 on the house arrest program. A total of 51 defendants were placed on the house arrest program. A total of 129 were placed on the pretrial release program. In the same six-month timeframe, 40 people completed the house arrest program and 87 completed the pretrial release program. Completion means the participants were either sentenced by the courts or were found in violation of the pretrial release agreement. Cost savings. Average daily cost of an inmate in the Cumberland County Jail is $75.55. An average daily cost of participants on the GPS or house arrest program is $4.48. Daily cost of 65 participants is $291.20. And the $4.48 is the actual cost. The savings of 147 participants in pretrial release program versus the Cumberland County incarceration to jail is $11,105.85 per day. We will continue to save the county money by carefully releasing individuals who qualify for the jail, from the jail to our program. Do we have any questions at this time? Yes, sir?
Do you like your new location?
I love it. Thank you.
We miss you.
I miss y'all too.
Mr. Chairman, you know, and Commissioner Booth and our attorneys on this, and so this program actually benefits our colleagues. One of the things, and it may be the county manager along with Ms. Gardner, I would like to see is that sometimes they don't have the bracelets to be able to do that because you only have so many. It's the weather, if we have that kind of savings, if you go back to the screen, that's $11,000 a day in terms of keeping people out. If there's a possibility of increasing the number of bracelets we have to be able to keep those folk out of jail, for us to be able to, whether you've got enough staff to monitor that, that's an issue. But to me, it seems as though an investment in some additional bracelets would increase the cost that we save per day from the jail. So I think that we need to, if we could have staff at least, look at how much that costs as to what we save in terms of keeping these people out of jail is tremendous. I will tell you, I saw all of that that she put up there, and sometimes they don't blow their horn loud enough. I dare say, I haven't seen anybody who's been put on the program that has violated it and committed some violent crime in the community. So the program works, and I think it's important that we continue to access that and be able to move forward on that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Booth?
Yeah, I'd like to echo what Glenn just said because that is, they don't know that if they put, you know, Amy on for the next nine days until her next court date, that Glenn comes in the next day and is as good or a better candidate for the bracelet she has on, and instead, we're going to have to, oh, that's not a bad idea, hold Glenn for the next seven days till his court date. But it's one of those things where if it's doing so well, in fact, if you pass Callie's screening to get out, you better not reoffend, you know, because she put you through it and if you, she understands exactly how you're getting a break and just what Glenn said, if we can spend the money to save ultimately a lot more money, then this is one of the things we have to look at.
Commissioner Keith?
Thank you, Callie. Thank you for what you're doing on this program. I do have a couple of questions because as Commissioners, we have to balance the fiscal responsibility with the public safety responsibility. So following up on Commissioner Adams and Booth's comments, do you have capacity to be able to handle more people?
Yes, we do.
Is the demand in our community for more people, meaning are there people currently in our detention facility right now who could be on your program?
Yes, they could be monitored through our house arrest program. As Commissioner Booth and Adam stated, it's dealing with my bracelets.
Okay, well... I just used my North Carolina-based high school education and did some math, and $11,000 a day comes out to over $4 million a year. Because at the detention center, you're not on a 40-hour work week. You're 365, seven days away, 24 hours a day. And when you start talking about those, those are significant savings. So I think the question is, and as Commissioners, as we go into our budget cycle of next year, we're looking at the positive impact of balancing public safety with funding. And it certainly seems to me, Callie, like your program is finding that, has found that balance. So with your Commissioners sitting right in front of you, all seven of us, what do you believe your capacity to go over where you are right now?
Right now, I have a capacity, I have a capacity of 70 bracelets.
Okay.
I have, I keep 72 in case something's happened to one of the ones that's already out. Actually, we could use at least another 20.
Okay. And you believe that some of those people now are sitting in our detention center that you could be using in your program?
Yes, sir, because I refuse to put them out without a bracelet.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cans?
Your program continues to be impressive. Over the years, it was one of the programs that I had absolutely no idea existed. So I know there are citizens out here and there are people in our, and I was wondering about the legal community. Do they, are they taking advantage of this? And I'd like for you, at one point, you told us how much those bracelets cost, but I won't ask you now because you don't have those figures at the tip of your tongue.
It's $4.48.
Okay.
$4.48 a day.
Per participant?
Yes, ma'am.
But that's, I'm talking about how much that includes the cost of the bracelet?
It includes the cost of the bracelet and the monitor.
Okay. I don't see why this program is not three times as big as it is. We can save on, because they pay their... We can save on... Because they pay their own health insurance, don't they? Do they?
Oh, the participants. Yes, they pay their own health. It's one of their home...
Own health cost, which would relieve our... Food care, the number of...
Officers.
Officers that we need. And I'd like to formally request... I don't want to give you anything else. But it needs to go into our budget process with your recommendations to us as to how we can continue to save money. Do you have hordes of people going out, recommitting crimes?
No, sir, not on my GPS. I do not. They'd be glad to get out of jail. They're glad to stay home. They're glad to eat their own food. They're glad to use their own bathroom. They're glad to just be at home.
I know. And on top of that, nobody wants to cross you.
I try to do a good job, ma'am.
You do a good job. Thank you so much for what you continue to do.
Ms. Cannon, you have your comment.
Mr. Chairman, I was just going to follow up that that $4.48 does not include staff costs. It's just the bracelet, the cost of bracelet and the monitoring. And we would like the opportunity to work with Ms. Gardner through the budget process and evaluate adding more bracelets and evaluating the staff levels. Because, yes, because Ms. Gardner has another piece to her presentation, and that's the misdemeanor diversion program that we added last year. So we do want to take a look at those staffing levels.
Okay. My next program I have is Sobriety Treatment Court. Our mission is to prohibit the use of alcohol and provide to addicted participants in the recovery process. Sobriety Court helps participants, Lord, to become clean and sober. The purpose: Providing safety for our community by monitoring the high-risk DWI offenders. The time is 12 to 24 months. That time is determined by the judge during sentencing. There are two components also to the Sobriety Court. You have the pretrial monitoring and Sobriety Court Treatment Program of the convicted defendants. And that is the sobriety court team picture we have here. Look at Mr. Adams. He only looks wonderful. Him and Mr. Booth.
I got my one-week chip. I got my one-week chip.
How many drinks was that, yeah?
The participants: You must be a resident of Cumberland County, receive an additional DWI charge while awaiting trial on a pending DWI charge, or receive a new DWI charge and have a DWI conviction within the past three years. Receive a new DWI charge and have two convictions within the seven years. Participant responsibilities: They must attend court sessions every other Wednesday, continuously wear alcohol monitoring bracelet for a minimum of 60 days, provided there are no violations. Clients are required to pay the cost of the bracelet and the monitoring, which is $168 every two weeks. They must complete a DWI and a mental health assessment. If unemployed, attend job readiness through FTCC, report a random drug screen, and abide by a curfew. Sobriety Court Treatment Program. The treatment side: Must be a resident of Cumberland County, a resident for suitable household or willing to reside in a transitional housing. Convicted of a DWI and on probation violation status. Assess as chemically dependent by a treatment provider. That means they choose to pick their own treatment provider that we cannot tell them where they need to go to get a treatment provider. Their responsibilities: They also must attend court sessions every Wednesday, attend substance abuse treatment classes as ordered, submit to random alcohol testing, where alcohol monitoring bracelet for 60 days. And they must also abide by a curfew, as ordered. Their responsibility: Pay a monthly supervision fee, attend CBI, Cognitive Behavior Intervention Course if assigned, remain on probation for six months following graduation, abide by all probation conditions set forth by the court and probation officer. Client served: There were averages of 75 clients served during the last six-month period. A total of 42 participants were ordered to Sobriety Court in the past six months. That is the residing Judge Hasty and one of the participants. The summary: Sobriety Court aims to treat alcohol-addicted DWI offenders by assisting the client in rebuilding his or her life and saving the lives of both the client and innocent lives in the community. Designated Judge Presiding Judge is Sobriety Court Judge District Court Judge David Hasty. He's serious on that one. Okay, we have... Oh, any questions?
Yes, thank you. Callie, Sobriety Court is... It's a good program. We have it later on in our agenda today. We're talking about another community program that we are dealing with, not only here in Cumberland County, but across the nation, and supervision of these things and a path to sobriety. Sobriety can mean a number of things. It's not only alcohol. Is... I'm stepping out on a limb here because it seems to me a short transition between all of the programs that you have for Sobriety Court and some of the same programs that we may be able to do with this opioid crisis that's coming on in our community. Has your community and your staff, or is there any talk, any chatter about combining the two? Because Sobriety Court and this opioid crisis do seem to dovetail into each other. It destroys lives. And, you know, it's mothers and fathers on this stuff, you know, former soldiers and veterans. At the hospital the other day, I heard a statistic that over 50% of the people that get hooked on opioids started when they got their wisdom teeth taken out. And that is not the intention of any opioid. It's not someone who purposely went out there and decided that they're going to be a drug addict. Have you guys looked at there to see if there's any dovetailing that we can work together with?
I've spoken with my...
Thanks.
If I could, Commissioner Keith, one of the things that I've been working with Ms. Gardner on is to look at their services more comprehensively.
Yes.
Because as you mentioned about Sobriety Court and opioid, the opioid with drug treatment kind of dovetailing. Something else we've talked about is Mental Health Court. Judge Steele has come and presented with you. And what I think, we do have kind of a hidden gem and a foundation from which we can look at all of these issues comprehensively and kind of do some trend-setting, if you will, in that one department. So we're looking at that comprehensively.
Okay. Thank you.
And now, Commissioner Keith, as to your question, we were actually ahead of the curve because we had a drug court. But the grant and the funding ceased and they just... It just didn't step up to be able to do it. So we were actually ahead of the opioid crisis until we allowed that to kind of dissipate. So, you know, that may be as they look at those services to be able to do that. The last thing I'd say is, again, Ms. Gardner knows, and Mr. Holden knows, and the manager don't talk about, the state has come down and said this is... This Sobriety Court is one of the best sobriety courts and programs in the state of North Carolina. They continue to fund this thing. They fund it because they believe it's an asset to this community. And they have always stepped up to be able to do that, allows these individuals... You talk about opiates. Alcohol is an addiction. It's a problem, too. It's not because people choose to do this. Some of them truly have an addiction. And so I think all of that plays into that comprehensive plan. But it does allow these gentlemen and ladies to continue to work and not lose their job as opposed to going off the DOC. So I commend you for this program and the work that is being done. Thank you.
Misdemeanor diversion program. Here we have some slides of our judge for diversion program is Judge Edward Pone. The lady you see to the left is Superior Court Judge Gail Adams. This is one of our first court sessions. She was the speaker there. And of course, District Court Judge, Chief Judge Robert Steele, myself, and Caroline. A quick program overview. Cumberland County, with the support and approval of the Board of Commissioners, started a new misdemeanor diversion program in 2016 for 16- and 17-year-olds who have no adult criminal record. The purpose is to divert the first-time arrests or citations for eligible misdemeanor charges rather than issuing a citation or making an arrest where probable cause can exist. Law enforcement officers in Cumberland County will issue a youth a citation directing the youth to contact the misdemeanor diversion representatives. This diversionary process is initiated by the officers. Eligibility: You must be 16 or 17 years old at the time of the offense, no adult criminal record, but you can have a juvenile record. Must be a misdemeanor offense. Sex offenses, firearm offenses, and traffic offenses are specifically excluded. MDP referrals are made from law enforcement agencies to include Cumberland County Sheriff's Office, the Phil Police Department, Spring Lake Police Department, Oakmead Police Department, and the Stedlen Police Department. Our completion process: Upon a successful completion of recommended program, MDP representatives, we will notify law enforcement officers of a completion date. If the youth does not comply or complete assigned program, law enforcement officers will be notified and can opt to move forward in a criminal court prosecution. Youth who successfully complete the program can save money. For an individual, the cost savings include court costs of $180, community supervision fees $250, supervision fees $40, drug test lab fees $600, and fines from $50 and up. First year results: From January 2017 through December 2017, MDP had 96 referrals to the program. Of the 96, 84 completed. Of the 12 who did not complete, MDP, six were incomplete, started the program but did not finish, and there were six unsuccessful who did not report to the program as directed. The 12 who did not complete the MDP program was issued citations. Of the 84 who complete the program, no rear arrests are recorded as of today's date. We will continue to work with our youth in Cumberland County and thank all of our law enforcement agencies for making their lifelong differences in the future of the youth in our county. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Yes, Commissioner Adams, call me.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the job that you're doing there. On this particular program, those that did not complete, what were some of the reasons that they were not completing?
They did not report to the program, or they came and they did not finish as they were ordered.
They came, but they... Okay. 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 Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Congratulations. Okay, at this time, our consent agenda, I'd ask if anything would be pulled at this point. I have two that have been asked. G and E.
Negative N. I'm sorry.
I got M.
G and E. Okay, any others?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to pull item 3N, specifically number 8.
3...
3N8.
Wait a minute.
8 won't be on your summary agenda. It's on notice.
Wait a minute.
Approval of the Budget Ordinance Amendments. A motion.
I move with the removal of 3G, 3H, and 3NH, and 8. Did we approve the consent agenda?
Second. I have a motion to second. All of those in favor? Any opposed?
I'm a four. Sorry about that.
Okay. How about a revote? All of those in favor?
Unanimous.
Okay. Proceed.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'd asked on G and H. I'll go to G first. I see what it says, but I thought that what we had come up with was a little bit longer than that. I went back and read the notes, and it wasn't just approval to waive the flu shot through that date, but also to evaluate the administrative fee of this shot and other administrative fees. So I didn't want to say, oh, no, we approved, we're just dropping it till then, and then that'd be the end of the story. Because I thought we had indicated we wanted to waive the flu shot so that we don't get in the same position next year at this time or with other situations coming up, that we began being a little proactive about evaluating this fee so that if it's too high, we don't stick people with it next year. And any other fees we have similar to this, we begin evaluating them in advance. And other than that, that's my only addition. So I would move for consideration that we approve the waiving of the flu shot and the administrative fee as in 3G with the addition that the fee structure be for this be reviewed along with other fee structures through our Health Department.
You heard the motion. Do you have a comment?
I got a comment. You know, we went through this in the budget season last year somewhat because we went with the fees with the landfill. Why don't we just look at all the fees that we do and at some point have management review that? And then we don't have to keep coming back per department. I mean, it may not happen in like, in the next week or so. But I think in line of that, because we just keep coming back. So if you just tag all of them, if they're appropriate, you don't need to bring them back. But I think that that makes a whole lot more sense than to do that. So I would add that if I could, if you would take that as a friendly amendment.
Keith, you have a comment?
I understand the purpose of that, and the only thing I would... Commissioner Adams, is when all this happened, I did a little bit of research myself. And with our administrative fee, the price at our Health Department exceeded every other commercial flu shot. Just because the state authorizes us to charge it an administrative fee up to a certain amount doesn't necessarily mean... If you went to, and this is not an advertising plug, but a Rite Aid, a CVS, a Sam's, any of those places, significantly less expensive than when you talk about what our administrative fee is with the cost of our flu shot, significantly more expensive at a county facility. So whereas a landfill fee, a customer doesn't really have another option. They're going to our landfill. That's...
I want to understand. I just said, let's just look at all of them. I mean, so I'm trying to figure out... I mean, all the fees may or may not be... I'm not saying they're out of order, but there's all kind of fees that we charge. Some of them we hadn't changed in 20 years, 30 years. So I'm not in disagreement with Mr. Booth in terms of this is just to look at it across the board.
And the purpose of what I was saying was you have to look at what the free market is doing, too. Just because we're authorized to charge up to a certain amount does not mean that we're competitive. Because the idea of our Public Health Department is to help those who may have trouble being able to afford some of the other things that are out there. We're not doing a good service if we're charging $45 when everyone else is charging $30, $35 for them. That was my only point, and...
I have no problem with the amendment being that as to this one and that maybe staff be directed that all department heads look at any fees that are under their jurisdiction and start doing an analysis of them.
And we do that during the budget process.
And I second that.
There we go.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion? All of those in favor?
Unanimous.
Mine also was M, approval request of Parker Poe for waiver of conflict of interest.
I was on M, too.
Yeah, I've got no problem with Parker Poe. In fact, it's kind of coincidental that Representative Richardson's sitting here because at the same time, the school board, over a decade ago, considered hiring Parker Poe for the Leandro litigation against the state of North Carolina. His firm made a much, 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 much more reasonable offer.
I was there.
You were offered. That's right. You were there then.
I was there.
It's kind of hard to keep track.
Yeah, I know. I move around.
But, and they were local attorneys, and I was in favor of this. But, and they were, they were local attorneys, and I was in favor of this, they were local attorneys that had children in the school system that saw what needed to get done and offered us a very substantial less, but it was, you know, Parker Poe. And so I got outvoted on the school board to hire them, and they were successful in it, but decades later, it was millions and millions and millions of dollars in fees. And they already represent us on two other issues. At some point, you have to say, you either represent the county or you don't, or get somebody local to do stuff, or, you know, I don't think I can represent Billy on two or three things and then say, but I'd like to sue you on a third one. So that's just, that's just personal me.
Commissioner Adams.
Mr. Chairman, I, you know, I agree with Mr. Booth, but the problem I had was, I didn't have enough information to say waive this. I have no idea what that lawsuit with the hospitality means. Was that a million dollars against us, or $20 against, there was not enough information. I read the letter, and it says, we want to do the hospitality and sue the county. Well, if you're going to sue me for $10 million, I might not waive that conflict. If it's $2,000, $1,000, I don't know, but I had major issue with, I had no idea what that item was, it was on taxes, but I just didn't have any idea. I didn't have enough information. If I get some more information, I may be inclined, but I can't vote for that without further information than a letter from them saying, we represent you on that, we want to represent them on this, and we want to sue you. That just is not enough information, that's what the letter said, and I can't do that in good conscience.
Mr. Chairman, I'd have to refer, any answers to that, to the county attorney?
It's an appeal, Red Lion Suites, I don't think they had, they did not have an attorney at the local board yet, or they have appealed to the property tax commission the valuation for 2017, and that's, that's what the case is, the numbers of the amount of evaluation. I think the difference between what the tax office is saying and what they're saying is about $200,000.
Commissioner Booth?
Well, in that regard, piggybacking on that, they represented us on potential millions in fees and still want to sue us over a $200,000 pro se dispute. I guarantee you there's somebody here in town, Representative Richardson, who could handle our, the county's best interests without having to go to Raleigh, Charlotte, Greensboro, Winston-Salem all the time.
I mean, the county's not hiring Parker Poe for the property tax bill, that's the company, the business company is hiring him privately.
Well, they pick who their clients are.
Make a motion?
I make a motion, I am not in favor of the approval of the request for Parker Poe at this time, I just, there's not enough information.
We have a motion?
Second.
Have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
That is unanimous.
Okay.
Thank you, sir, that's all.
Okay, we had another item, I believe. Commissioner Keith?
Yes, sir, item three, N, specifically number eight, that is on there, it has to do with the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Budget Ordinance Amendment in the amount of $161,363 for staffing at the disaster recovery intake center. I did get some information from the Assistant County Manager, Mr. Jackson, and just have some questions on it.
Okay.
We are basically, we've been briefed about this as commissioners a number of times, and there are a number of different projects in play, whether they be multifamily housing, whether they be housing repair. And the information I got back is, we're going to be, we have to take over the staffing from the state for disaster recovery, and when's that beginning?
February 19th.
February 19th.
But we've already started transitioning, and there already have been some changes in staffing. We've actually have asked him for some assistance to provide some additional staffing up until March 23rd, and that's primarily so we can make sure that all of our staff are adequately trained on their software, so we make sure that there's as seamless a transition as possible.
Will this be also going through our Community Development Office?
There will be some staff, there already are some staff, that are having to go over to the intake center to provide assistance from our Community Development Department.
Okay, and do we believe that there is going to be individuals requesting for a year for these kind of assist, for this kind of assistance?
Where we stand today, I would say hopefully not. I'm hoping that by June, the application process is wrapped up, if not sooner. But in working with the state, they're more interested in keeping it open-ended to make sure they catch as many people as possible.
Okay.
So, working with our partners at the state, we're moving along that same line at this point.
And my only concern is, so on this funding, if, if we decided that we have maxed out and we have decided that it's time to close it, will this just revert back to the CBD, the Community Development Block Grant Fund to be able to be put into more renovation? Will this fund?
No, so actually, there are funds available within the grant, a certain percentage of the funds, that are available for administration and planning, so that would cover staff costs and also some of the cost of providing those services. So it's not that you can take those monies and put them over here and use those for housing, those are specifically for administration and planning.
Okay, but the administrative fund, we have our Community Development people working very, very much hand in hand.
Yes, it's essential, we have to.
So that, that funding could also be diverted to Community Development, correct?
You talking about the $161,000? At this point, what we're asking is that we'd be able to use, maybe I don't understand the question, but what we're asking to be able to use that money to hire temporary staffing to augment the staff that we already have in place, so that their regular work does not fall to the wayside, because they still have a great workload at Community Development, you know, on a day-in, day-out basis.
Where I had an issue with, this is a very fluid program that we're working on. We're still not sure where all the funding is going to go, but we are going to be employing probably on the average of four people, full-time, for a year, 161 FTE, four FTEs going forward with that, but we may not need that, that much money. But we're dedicating that funding to them, and we don't know where the need is really going to be and where that funding is going to go, because we haven't settled on the funding yet, on whether it's going to multifamily, or whether it's going to homelessness, or whether it's going to even home, home repair. What I would like to ask is that, we don't need a briefing, but maybe at the Finance Committee meeting, that we have an idea every thirty days about how many people are using the disaster recovery service? Because if we're getting ten people a month who want home repair, but a number of multifamily, we can readjust to where it's going.
Sure.
So, is that reasonable?
Oh, definitely, yes, sir. We'd be glad to do that.
Okay, with, with that being said.
Mr. Booth has a comment?
Okay.
I have a question. Heard temporary staffings within years positions. When is the temporary, is it temporary in days per week, hours per day, a year, a four month gap? What's the temporary?
So these would be time-limited positions, so that is temporary.
Okay, from when to when?
Monday through Friday, nine to four p.m.
All right, when's the limit?
The limit is, if you're asking me when this will end, it's very similar to the question I think Commissioner Keith had. At this point, we hope that we're done taking applications by June of this year. But again, this is something we're working on with the state, wanting to make sure we can capture as many people as possible that have needs.
I mean, it's kind of a real definite, the only thing it's missing is pennies, $161,363, but we don't know how far that's going to cover. Who came up with that figure?
The, well, and I have Dee Taylor here with me, she can help us with that, but that, that funding really is intended to help us go through June of this year.
June of 2018?
Yes, because originally, it was 300-plus thousand for a year, so we've cut that down to June.
So it's June 18 for people, Monday through Friday, nine to four, and then we can reevaluate it between now and?
Definitely, and we will, that was our plan all along, is to make sure that we had adequate staff based on the trends there in the center, the number of people coming in, making applications, you know, requesting assistance.
Is it four positions?
Yes.
For four months at $161,000? Four months?
Dee, Dee?
It would be for the remaining year, and it's actually, yeah, I have the exact number of positions.
I'm sorry, Dee, I can't agree that well.
Approximately, it would be up to covering six positions.
For four months?
Yeah.
$161,000?
For the remaining of the fiscal year, for thirteen pay periods.
Okay, Mr. Jackson said we're trying to work with the state to get into March, but we really have to, we're supposed to take over in the 18th of February. So February, March, April, May, June, so four months, we're going to be staffing six people for $161,000.
We're just trying to prepare for that many staff, depending on how it goes for the remaining months, but for sure, we will need for starting off.
I just, it just seems to me like we did a, we did a math equation, and we said we have $161,000 and we got to spend it. I mean, that's what it seems like. I may be having this all wrong, but it just seems a bit excessive to me, because we're not even sure, how many, how many people have applied yet?
And David, I have, we have David Carthon from the state here with us, but it's my understanding over a hun, about, about two, about 200 have applied, and approximately 30 will be moving on to the eligibility and review.
200 have applied and 30 are going to be moving on for eligibility?
Can I make a comment on that? So when folks come in, they have a two-hour appointment, there's a large amount of paperwork that they're required to bring with them. Sometimes they don't have all that paperwork. So a application could be incomplete. We have, from what I understand, based on the statistics that I've seen, a large number of incomplete applications. So it's not just that they come in that one time, everything's done, and it moves on to eligibility review. There is still a long process of trying to get all the required documentation so that it's in the file, so that's when it hits the eligibility review, it can move forward and continue on down its path for them to determine whether it can be eligible or not for this program. So it's, it's not just that one time in and visit, and we've talked to you, and things are done, it's, it is a very lengthy process, is what we're finding.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
David, I saw you had your hand, would you like to come up and say something?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And this is Mr. David Cawthorn, he's with North Carolina Department of Public Safety, and he's our local representative here at our intake office.
David, thanks for your patience, and thanks for making a few comments.
Thank you very much, it's, it's an honor to be able to talk about the disaster recovery efforts in Cumberland County. We've, we, the 200 number is actually, I believe that's, I don't have the exact number in front of me, but that's the number of completed applications. There are a number of incomplete applications. At this point, what Tracy said is correct, we may have a survivor come in more than one time, they may come in up to three times to, to make sure that they have the proper documentation for these applications. These applications are document-driven, we're establishing a lot of evidence on the database so to give these folks the best chance that they have to be eligible for this program, whether it's proof of, you know, ownership of the home, documentation that shows they had homeowner's insurance, information about repairs that have already been completed, that they may qualify for reimbursement. So I think, I think probably over 300 people have actually walked through the doors of the center since November 29th, and like I said, we do have a number of incomplete applications, we do have a system in place where these folks can call, they call 211 actually, which, to get a report on their application, and the two, the state 211 number, they can also find out, they have access to the database that we use to store all the documents, they can find out, you know, what is left for them to bring in for their applications. So we really do appreciate the support and the partnership with the county and the city of Fayetteville, and we appreciate any efforts to, to continue this, the staffing at the center with this, with this amendment.
Mr. Adams?
Mr. Chairman, and I guess some other people have some comments, I was going to eventually make a motion, but I just looked at this budget amendment, and it requires no additional county funding?
It's HUD money through the disaster recovery program, and it requires no matching county dollars.
And meet the HUD, got to meet the HUD guidelines for anything in terms of hiring and all of that, so the guidelines are in place, no county money, HUD money and all of that, thank you.
Mr. Booth?
Okay, I think I got a little more confused.
Sorry.
So, these people are going to be here to help them if they come in with incomplete, need help on finding documentation and to get their packets to qualify.
That's, that's correct. The rebuild NC website actually has a detailed document list for, that they can go to to see what documentation that they, that they need to bring in, but people come in the door who have a lot of their documentation, people come in the door who don't have that much documentation. The specialist, the application specialist job is to, number one, show compassion for these individuals, and number two, to, you know, work with them, listen to their situation, and we try to get as many of the documents as we can the day of their interview. We can actually assist them, we can go into the County Registry of Deeds site, and we can actually pull a deed while they're there, or we can go to the county tax office website and pull a property tax bill, you know, while they're there. We do as much as we can and try to utilize the whole two hours that we need for these, for these applications.
Okay.
And when they walk out the door, they have a list in front of them of what they need to bring back in to us, so we try to make it very clear to them, this is what we did today, and this is what we still need for your application.
Okay, and follow-up, it's not going to cost any additional county funds, no matching funds or anything like that, it's part-time, it's HUD-driven.
It's HUD.
Now, but final, final question is, if we don't spend but 80 of it, is there any way that the county can spend 81 on projects here in Cumberland County? Or is this all just for this?
This is, my, my understanding is this is just for disaster recovery.
Commissioner Council?
Mr. Chairman, I'm ready with a motion, because these people have had their lives disrupted, and they are trying to put their lives back together, and we're talking about funds that are not direct, I mean, they're allocated specifically for this purpose.
That's correct.
And I can't imagine, as somebody who can't even remember to keep the right insurance card in the car, having everything destroyed, so let's, y'all, let this go forward, and let's approve it, please. I move to approve.
We have a motion.
It's to approve all the budget amendments on that.
All of them, everything.
Second, we have a motion, we have a second. We have any other comment? If not, I'll call a few vote, all those in favor? All those opposed?
Voting in favor were Commissioners Fairclough, Keith, Council, Chairman Lancaster, Commissioner Adams and Evans, voting in opposition was Commissioner Booth.
Thank you. Okay, we are at items of business, Madam County Manager.
Yes, sir, item 4A is consideration of the First Amendment to the inter-local agreement related to the funding of the Franklin Street parking garage and the Cellar Water, and secondly, consideration of an inter-local agreement between the city of Fayetteville and Cumberland County related to funding and development of a downtown minor league baseball stadium with attachments. Mr. Chairman, before I turn it over to the county attorney, I'd like to just provide some background information, if I could, please. After the city commissioned a feasibility study in September of 2016, the city council approved a financing model, and it was at that time that they asked the Board of County Commissioners to consider contributing to this project through the creation of an increment finance, tax increment financing district by an inter-local agreement. At our September 19, 2016 Board of Commissioners meeting, the board unanimously approved a resolution. the board unanimously approved a resolution to consider participating in the baseball project, provided that we could negotiate an amendment to the existing parking deck agreement. So, before you today, you have two items for consideration. During the month of December, we had discussions about the parking deck amendment and the new interlocal agreement for the baseball stadium. The key provisions to the amendment to the parking deck were as follows. First, we had to redefine the boundaries of the district to exclude the baseball stadium district. Secondly, we added a provision to treat formally tax-exempt property within the district the same as non-exempt property if the status changed. And then, third, we wanted to change the term of the county's obligation for the parking deck and add an end date of December thirty-first, two thousand and thirty. As far as the baseball stadium agreement, the key provisions are as follows. The county would contribute a hundred percent of the increased revenue from ad valorem tax collections from the stadium district for the first five fiscal years at a hundred percent, once the baseball stadium is complete. And then, for the following fifteen fiscal years after that, we would contribute seventy-five percent of the increased revenue from ad valorem tax collections. Secondly, as far as the term, the agreement would be in effect until all the taxes were levied for years twenty-twenty through twenty-thirty-nine. These items were discussed at the Finance Committee meeting last week, February first, and the committee agreed to bring this forward today. Subsequent to that action, late Friday afternoon, we received from the City of Fayetteville a baseball stadium agreement and an amendment to the parking deck agreement. It's my understanding the county attorney reviewed those agreements, and I would ask him to provide his advice and counsel after his review, based on what we received last Friday. Mr. Moorefield.
Thank you, Ms. Cannon. I laid up at each of your seats before the meeting, the final documents that the manager referred to. I, I left out the signature pages because it was just so many pages that were not necessary. But with the, the first, and they're stapled together, so, so they wouldn't get all mixed up. But the first one is the Franklin Street Parking Garage Amendment, and the language that's in this document now complies with what, what I understand the board's expectations to be, as, as the manager has described. The, the changes that we had to go back and, that the city had made, that we're, that we made back original, first of all, just, I think that was just a typo in the very first, whereas on the recitals, where it says the sale of water to the county or its rural water districts, that's what, the way that was supposed to read, and I fixed that. The basis language was not changed by the city, and the, nor the accounting or term portions. There was a sub, there was a section six that had a weird effective date in two thousand and twenty, and it's my understanding that Commissioner Adams had all, has already talked with the mayor, and, and that is resolved. So, that's been taken in, out of the agreement, sent back by the city entirely. So, those two pages, the first two in your, in your staple packages, I'm advising you that they, that that does give us an amendment that complies with the board's expectations. Do you want, can you go ahead with the, Mr. Chairman, both of the agreements or questions about that one, about that one first?
Okay, Commissioner Keith, your light's on. You have a question? Yes, as Chairman of the Finance Committee, our, our Finance Committee consists of Chairman, I'm sorry, Commissioner Adams and Commissioner Fairclough. Commissioner Adams and I have been very involved in this for well over a year. What my motion is going to be is the intent of the Finance Committee was, gave very clear direction, and do you believe that, as the attorney, do you believe that this TIF contract is representative of what we approved at the Finance Committee?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make these in two motions, two different TIFs.
Well, and, and that's fine. I, I'll take my comment. I was just going, if you're going to do that, I'm fine.
Do you?
Because I'll go tell you the, the difference, and that came back from the city, but that was resolved, so that anybody had any question about that, and that was the only, I think, variance from what we did at the Finance, but that's fine. Go ahead, Mr. Keith.
And I think we, we sort of, we confused this whole issue. The Finance Committee made a recommendation to go to the full board, and that's probably what should have happened. But, and, and then it gone there, but things got confusing when we started getting changes and stuff. But our county attorney has said that the direction of the Finance Staff, of what was approved by the Finance Staff, is representative in this document.
Yes, sir.
Correct? Okay. You have a motion? Yeah. Let me give my paperwork now, got all messed up. Okay. Mr. Chairman, I make a recommendation that...
You got to move, as opposed to recommend.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, make a, make a recommendation that Cumberland County approves the interlocal agreement pursuant to the Franklin Street parking deck with the City of Fayetteville.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
I'll second that.
Are you doing both or just one?
I'm doing separately. Okay. We have, we have a motion and a second. We have any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion?
Unanimous.
That's unanimous. Second motion? Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approved the interlocal agreement with the City of Fayetteville, dealing, working with the baseball agreement.
What?
We have a motion. Any, any discussion on the motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Commissioner Booth?
Which one?
Which one?
Which one? Which agreement?
Second. This is the interlocal agreement between the City of Fayetteville and Cumberland County relating to the funding and development of a downtown minor league baseball stadium.
The one we have today?
Yes.
Dated, dated, prayer, two-two-eighteen.
And I, I put that date in the footer to keep these things, because there are a lot of versions now.
This has been a very arduous task.
That's what I'm asking.
When the county attorney said this is the most recent, it is, there has been a number of renditions. And, and I would like to say to the Finance Committee, to the Baseball Committee, this has been a long process, but I believe that we are getting to where we need to be to work with the City of Fayetteville. I, I believe that we have been very respectful for their desires, and we have extended an olive branch to extend the actual financing for, for a time. So, with that, would you like, Ms. White, would you like for me to read the motion again, or do you feel like you have it?
If you would, please. Yes, sir. Thank you.
I'd like to make a recommendation for approval of the interlocal agreement between the City of Fayetteville and Cumberland County relating to funding and development of a downtown minor league baseball stadium dated, with the document dated, two-two, two thousand and eighteen. Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Thank you.
All those in favor, and finally, that is unanimous.
Unanimous.
Thank you, everyone. Let's move to item B.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, this is consideration of a resolution in support of supporting opioid litigation.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
And I don't know if you saw my light, but I must apologize, I apologize to the board. When we were in committee, it was not my intent to bring a resolution today. There's a resolution that you have to have a public nuisance, but we talked about it the first time at committee meeting. It was my intent that we have the county manager, I meant the county attorney, set out a plan, because we don't have the documentation. You don't want to move forward resolving something to be a public nuisance. You don't have the, the proper data for it. I know we fifth in the nation. However, I think that you have to have the data to be able to support a resolution. The county attorney, right after, or that same day, that it was brought up in committee, had to go to his County Attorney Association as he's president. I knew he wasn't going to be able to get there, because I think that's the conversation we had, because he asked me how soon we wanted to do this. I think that we need some kind of a plan or deadline on that, but, so I would ask that we not move forward on this resolution until that data's presented along with the resolution, and then we move forward. So, that would be, and that's, and that was just, I guess I just wasn't clear at the committee meeting, but that's where I am. I apologize to the board on that.
Mr. Keith, you have a comment?
I'm sorry, no, sir.
Okay, Mr. Booth.
Yeah, that was exactly what I wanted to ask, is certainly there's no problem with the intent of it going forward, but I had the usual who, what, when, where, why, and how, and we don't have that document in front of us. So, I appreciate you taking that.
And I think what we were anticipating was just either a resolution or by consensus, just direction for staff to move forward and bring back a plan for, for the pursuit of litigation at, at the next meeting.
And that would be my motion, to bring back that plan. And I don't know how long it'll take, but as soon as possible, because that litigation needs to take place, because everybody else is getting on board with that. So, we could have that plan at our next committee meeting in March.
And I'll second that.
February fifteenth.
Oh, Feb, well, can you do it by February fifteenth?
I think, February nineteenth is the next board meeting, isn't it? The nineteenth? I think we can have, yes, sir.
Oh, fifteenth is the next committee meeting?
Yes.
So, we could have about fifteenth, and then we can basically bring it back maybe on the nineteenth. That would be my motion.
And I'll second that, and thank you for your forward on that article.
Yes.
We have a motion and a second. Any other comments? If not, I ask your vote.
Unanimous.
That's unanimous. Okay. That gets us down to item of business C.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, this is approval of changes to an economic development incentives for Campbell Soup and the re-subdivision of Cedar Creek Industrial Park. This was an item that was considered at the Finance Committee meeting, and it was unanimously approved, and I ask Mr. Moorefield to review this item, please.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
In the interest, interest of time, all this was presented at the Finance Committee. Can we go ahead and entertain a motion?
Fine with me.
If, if so, then I will move that we approve the changes as recommended by the county attorney.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Item D.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Consideration of calling for a public hearing for consideration of a change in the governance structure of a health and/or human services agency. Mr. Holder.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, and to the board, in response to your desires as a result of your goal-setting retreat on last Friday, we have been in consultation with representatives from the school of government and sought their advice on what steps would have to take place in order for such a change to occur. In accordance with North Carolina General Statute one fifty-three A dash seventy-seven, the board would have to hold a public hearing to receive citizen comments for any consideration of a change to the governance structure. That public hearing would have to be advertised for a period of not less than thirty days. And so, before you, you have consideration for the calling of that hearing. If it is the pleasure of the board to do so, we would then advertise in the local newspaper calling for that public hearing.
Okay, Mr. Evans?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to make a motion that we call for a public hearing for consideration of the change in the governance structure of the Health and Human Services Agency.
We have a motion?
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Unanimous. Item E.
Yes, sir. We have a request from the Fayetteville Economic Development, Fayetteville Cumberland Economic Development Corporation. Mr. Warner is here, if we have any questions. But this is consideration and approval of a resolution and submission of an application in support of Project Copper, to apply for funding through the North Carolina Department of Commerce Building Reuse Program. Funds are available through the Department of Commerce Building Reuse Program. Project Copper is a direct lead contact that was generated in the fall of two thousand and seventeen by FCEDC. The company is Cambridge Lee Industries. It's based in Pennsylvania, and they are looking to expand into North Carolina as a possibility for expanding their manufacturing operation. If we were successful in this recruitment effort, the project would create nineteen full-time jobs with an average annual salary of about thirty-one thousand dollars. There would be investment of real property of about four hundred thousand dollars. And so, they are hoping to begin their operations in North Carolina in mid-two thousand and eighteen. Pending final construction numbers, this project has received preliminary approval for up to thirty-seven thousand five hundred of funds from the Building Reuse Program. FCEDC is requesting the board's consideration and approval of a resolution for Project Copper and asking Cumberland County to apply for those funds on behalf of Cambridge Lee Building Reuse Project. There would be a five percent local required match that would not exceed one thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and again, we have Mr. Warner here from FCEDC.
Always a pleasure to see you, my friend. Mr. Booth, Commissioner Booth?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd move to approve the resolution submission as contained in four E of an application in support of Project Copper to apply for funding through the North Carolina Department of Commerce Building Reuse Program.
Have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, call if you vote.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Mr. Warner? Thanks for coming, my friend. We're to the nominations part.
Oh, shucks.
How about A? Mr. Booth?
I have.
I'm sorry, it's the, it's the number, the letter A in the nominations. Mr. Chairman, it's my pleasure to nominate Dwayne Holder and Glenn Adams for those two vacancies.
Okay.
I was set for one. Sorry.
Anybody got those?
I have them.
Got you. Item B.
I'd like to nominate Paul Taylor, Becky, Rebecca, I don't have her last name. It's on here. Alicia Campbell, Robert Williams, Felicia Johnson, and Ida Baker.
Okay, item C.
Item C, Equalization and Review Board. I'd like to nominate Marva Lucas Moore for the at-large position, William Carroll Beard, Ernest Kennedy, Rodney Sherrill, and Kathy Ossie.
Okay. Item D is Cumberland County Local Emergency Planning Committee.
I'd like to nominate, does somebody else want to nominate?
You're right.
Geneva Mankel, Caleb Stoker, Renee Larson, Andrew Jacobs.
And there's one vacancy on the Civic Center Commission.
I would like to nominate Ms. Lexi Haspis.
Haspis.
Okay.
Hoppy?
I really missed that one, though.
You got it.
We do not have any other appointments for this meeting. Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
None unanimous.
We are adjourned.
I've got somebody.
Be careful, because all these lights are still on.